Good evening, everybody. It is April 6th. This is our school committee meeting, and I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools is a forward-thinking district that cultivates the academic and social-emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient, lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV, and our order of business this evening is the call to order, opening procedures, agenda review, and adoption. We'll have time for a public comment. And our administrative items include the Student Advisory Council presentations, transportation fees and waitlist, strategic plan update, and next steps with Prem. And if everyone's okay, we're going to move that to item number two. We will then have the NESDEC update, the public hearing. We will not need a hearing, but we will be having a vote on school choice participation for the 2023-2024 school year. We will have discussed the superintendent summative evaluation, superintendent's update, assistant superintendent's update, warrant approvals, our consent actions including approval of minutes from March 2, 2023, and March 16, 2023, acceptance of gifts and donations, and then we'll have member updates, action items, and then we'll adjourn. So I will take attendance and make sure everyone's okay with the order of business. Aaron Williams, Paul Kendall, Tina Fattanides, Mark Terry.
Yes.
And I will start by asking if there's anyone here from the public that would like to say anything this evening. I don't see or hear anybody, so I will move then to the Student Advisory Council presentations. So if you guys want to come on up to the podium, so we can see you on TV. Welcome.
Hi. So a lot of stuff has happened in the past.
Yeah, if you guys could all introduce yourselves and tell us what grade you are. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I'm April Wang. I'm a senior.
Thanks, April.
Yeah. So, yeah, a lot of stuff has happened in the past two months. So the HS Theatrical Society had their performance of Mamma Mia recently, which was a huge success showcasing great artistic and musical talent. Last Sunday, Make-A-Wish hosted their annual fashion show where seniors dressed up in their prom outfits or other formal dress for the fundraiser. And two Wish kids actually participated as well, which is really exciting to see, like, who we are helping. The yearbook was submitted today after the yearbook editors worked hard all year to create the 2022-2023 yearbook. And then this week was also Teacher Appreciation Week, and so the Student Council hosted X-Box all week long where students wrote cards, sorry, to thank teachers for their dedication and hard work.
Thanks, April. Hello.
Hello. I'm Rogved, a junior. So recently, HS hosted the College Fair, the Metro West College Fair, in which juniors got a chance to explore colleges that they may potentially be interested in. Colleges like UVM, UConn, UMass, Amherst, Stony Brook, and many more were over there. And, yeah, so the Model UN Conference held a, the Model UN Club held a recent conference in which we went to Winchester. So the trip management overall went well, and two delegates ended up winning an award, which is great. On top of that, the HSDA held a fundraiser in which money for United 24 was raised, which is a Ukrainian initiative that funds the Health Ministry and Defense Ministry of Ukraine. So the term also ends today, April 6, 2023. So students talk to their teachers about their grades and all of that, which they needed to manage. And also coming up recently are the AP exams. So those will take place from May 1 to May 11. The teachers will prepare the students for that and provide the content that they need to succeed. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily. I'm a junior. So Class of 2024 is selling prom tickets over the next couple of weeks. Prom is going to be at Lakeview Pavilion on the 19th, and the theme is going to be Enchanted Garden. And then this year, HS had their first-ever inclusive PE class, which was great. And we also had the Unified Track inaugural season, which we got brand of uniforms for from Stucco. And then athletes will also be preparing for the Special Olympics, which are next Friday. So everyone's encouraged to come and cheer them on as they compete. And then both high school bands this weekend went to MICA, and the high school band, who?
Is how are all of these?
The high school band Blue got a silver medal, and the high school band White got a bronze medal, just showcasing artistic talent in the high school. And then Stucco will be hosting Bingo Night on the 26th. And admission is $10, and everyone in the community is welcome to join.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam. I'm a junior. Spring sports started up last week. And I think the NA National Honor Society had their yearly talent show. So there were many great acts of singing, dancing, playing piano, blindfolded chess, and many more. The juniors have been having seminars run by their guidance counselor, showing them the college admissions process. The underclassmen are also, they have finalized their course selections for next year, and the March SAT results came out, and people are signing up for the May and June SATs. So juniors should see, like, where they're at for colleges more. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, guys. All, does anyone have any questions for Tommy? I'm sorry, Tommy. I didn't even see you slip in.
Just got here from track.
Welcome.
April wasn't lying. A lot of things did happen. So this, currently this week, Senior Week tickets are being sold for the week of, I believe it's May 26. It's Memorial Day week, just in preparation to build up the excitement for graduation, which is again on Sunday, June 4. And also, the sign, the yard signs are being sold as well. Also, the Reality Fair has been planned for May 26, where, sorry, May 29 is Memorial Day, and May 26 is Reality Fair, where students will have the opportunity to learn about, like, financial literacy and stability, and they'll navigate expenses such as, like, housing, insurance, and other, you know, day-to-day kind of things based on a career-based paycheck. So like, if someone's, like, going into, like, computer engineering, they're going to have a different, you know, expenditure than if, say, they want to be a banker or an actuary or anything like that. There's also an idly trip headed by Mr. Worster and Ms. Calant that will be leaving for Milan, Venice, and Rome, as well as Frankfurt during a layover next Wednesday through the following Sunday. This should be really exciting. That should give around 60 students the experience to get to know cultures other than, you know, just generalized American culture a little bit better, at least for about a week and a half. Amnesty International, the club at Ashland High School, is starting a fundraiser selling bracelets for the benefit of the Center of Disaster Philanthropy, which will be helping out people that are victims of the earthquakes that occurred in Turkey and Syria, as well as the Russia-Ukraine war going on. And lastly, last Monday, the students from Joshi Magaoka All-Girl School in Ikubukuro, Japan, came to Ashland High School. I believe there were 39 of them that ended up coming, and they all had peer guides that went with them. I was one of them. So basically, they just, we went through their schedule, our schedule, and just, like, brought them along, translated what needed to be translated, so they could get the experience of, like, what an American high school looks like before they went and toured Harvard and MIT, which is, you know, a slightly different experience.
How do you know? Couldn't be the same.
You know, they're only going to go home talking about Ashland.
Right. How'd that go?
That's awesome.
How'd that go?
It was, I know no Japanese whatsoever. So I was just not prepared for the level of translation that I was going to have to do. It was basically six hours straight of multitasking, of, like, trying to interpret and also understand and take notes. But it was a really good experience. She had insights about, like, Ashland that, like, are things that I just, like, take for granted. They were all very excited for hot dogs in the cafeteria. Not my personal favorite food, but they were very amped about that. It was a good experience.
So American.
You're much more American than I am.
Exactly. Oh, that's great, actually. That sounds, it's, it sounds nice for them and nice for you, too.
Thanks, Tommy.
Any questions for the Student Advisory Council before you get dismissed? We all have to stay here.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Thank you for coming, and thank you for keeping us updated. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You as well.
You as well.
Good night.
Prem.
Can you hear us okay, Prem?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Perfect.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Paul, can you turn it up just a little bit?
Yeah, thanks.
So Prem's going to take over the presentation here in a moment. Basically, he's here tonight just to give us a rundown of where we are, where we've been, where we're headed, to make sure that we get our strategic plan finalized eventually. That'd be great. But I, and it's hard, right? It's hard because we're trying to pull all of us together at times and do the work, and Prem's got some suggestions. He, Mike, and I have been going back and forth for weeks at a time, and we're just always having dialogue. And I think we've come to a good solution as to how we want to approach things, and, and so we can have the strategic plan ready to roll out for the fall, which is what our intent is. I mean, we were hoping we could be there a little sooner, but we're not, and that's okay. And so I'll turn it over to Prem. Is that an okay overview as to what we're looking at?
Absolutely.
Is there a way to get the screen so it's just Prem?
He's not, he's going to have, share a screen.
Oh, okay.
So he's got a presentation.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Let's see whether I have a user error or I can actually do this. Can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome. So for the benefit of the group, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Prem Ito. Obviously, I, I sound like I'm battling a little cold, so I'll, you know, troop through this today and, you know, stop me and interrupt me if you have any questions, either school committee or administration. But I'm a consultant from Hazard, Young, T and Associates, and we've been facilitating the strategic plan process since late April of last year. So, you know, just a quick overview of what we're going to go over today. We're going to go over where we've been and where we're going in terms of the strategic planning process. We'll go over the key strategic plan components that we've kind of looked at in depth, and questions to ask, and definitions for the benefit of the community listening in. We'll look at a really high-level view of strategic priorities. This still needs to be approved by the school committee, and then we'll talk about next steps. So, you know, very briefly, in terms of the strategic planning process, you know, there are three phases to strategic planning. The first phase is the engage phase, which we started back in April of 2022, as I mentioned, and it went through September of 2022. And that it, that's kind of the research phase, the fact-finding phase. So it included interviews, focus groups, a community survey, which we actually closed and reopened, and, you know, finally closed again in September. But, you know, it's a inquiry, a method of inquiry to identify what are the key priorities and values of the stakeholders. The second phase is quite comprehensive. It's the focus phase. This is where we kind of dove into the data, you know, discovered key themes, key findings, and workshopped. And we did that with the school committee and members of the administration. So you'll see here the definition, creating a focused and actionable strategic plan aligned to stakeholder priorities. And then the third phase, after we approved the strategic plan, is the implementation phase, where we actually talk about strategies, tactics, in order to accomplish the objectives and priorities that we've laid out in Phase Two. Most importantly, strategic measures are critical, you know, so that we can identify our, so that we can track and monitor the performance against some of the goals and objectives over the course of five years. So there'll be a, you know, monitoring mechanism to, to ensure that we're following through on our strategic plan priorities and objectives. So you all saw this as a school committee and administration way back when, on July 25 of last year, during your administrative and school committee retreat. But this is kind of a refresher of the strategic planning process. So the, you know, the top of the chart here, hopefully you can read it, is looking at generally Phase One and Phase Two of strategic planning. The middle of the chart really is the meat of Phase Two. And then finally, the bottom part of this chart is Phase Three. You'll, you'll notice on the left side, it talks about things that are strategic in nature. And when we talk strategy, the top of this diagram, so, you know, research and findings and mission, vision, guiding principles, these are typically driven by the board. And if you go down to that dotted line area, that's more of a joint exercise between the administration and the board. So when we looked at strategic priorities or goals and objectives, that was, you know, a joint exercise between the administration and board. And finally, when we look at Phase Three, that's more so driven by the administration and their team, extended team, and the board returns more so to an oversight role. Any questions on this chart before we move on?
Nope.
They're shaking their head. No.
Okay. So, you know, very briefly, on Phase One, we started back, April was our planning meeting, and in May, we conducted interviews of each of the school committee members, the superintendent and assistant superintendent, so one-on-one interviews. In May and June, we led several focus groups totaling around 66 participants, which included administration, faculty and staff, students, parents, community members, and town leadership. And then finally, we administered a survey. Approximately 1,700 respondents, you know, finished and completed the survey from July to September of 2022, and that included students, community members, parents, administration, et cetera. So you'll see that we had a very comprehensive look in terms of, you know, the stakeholders of the Ashland Public School community. In Phase Two, we started back on September 1, 2022. We had several workshops with the school committee and administration to develop a vision, mission, strategic priorities, and objectives. And I'll get into the definition of some of these components for those of you watching at home and live. But this process comprised of approximately 12 hours over five sessions is pretty interactive. We also included feedback loops with the staff, for instance, when we were looking at, you know, changes to the vision statement. You know, what are the key strategic plan components that we looked at? So the first one is the vision. So what is the desired future of our school district? The mission, you know, what are we going to do on an ongoing basis to achieve our vision? You know, sneak preview, we actually, you know, found that our mission was really sound as it. So we didn't really, you know, in the preliminary look, we're not making any changes to that mission. Strategic priorities, what are our three to five overall themes or categories of focus for the next five years? And that was based on the, you know, all the data components that we gathered, including the interviews, focus groups, and survey. And then strategic objectives. Within each of those, in our case, we have four priorities. You know, what are the actions necessary to make progress towards our priorities? Meaning, you know, if we achieve these, you know, three to five items, we will, in essence, achieve the spirit of completing our strategic priority over the course of five years. So very preliminary, very preliminary. This is still, you know, pending school committee approval. I think we're targeting May for that school committee potential approval. But the four priorities that we landed on were equity, social-emotional learning, resource management, and curriculum and programming. So, you know, what are the next steps? You know, obviously, we, I just talked about, you know, approving the strategic plan. Phase Two is generally a best practice. So, you know, approving the vision, mission, strategic priorities and objectives, and that would be done generally by the school committee. So hopefully, we can get what you need, school committee, to, you know, make that happen. You know, creation of a framework for strategic plan design teams to follow to create implementation plans. So, you know, when we talk about Phase Three, we're talking about work plans. So that would include, you know, what is the desired outcome of each of these objectives? You know, what does that look like over the course of five years? You know, what are the strategies that we need to, you know, employ to, to achieve that desired outcome? What are the measures? And the measures, I would say, is going to be joint exercise between the school committee and the administration. You know, how are we going to monitor and track that, that we've achieved some of these objectives? Timeline generally is included as well, you know, over the course of five years. Five years. You're not going to do everything in year one. It's, it's going to span the, you know, the period of the five years. And then, you know, facilitation of strategic design teamwork sessions to create completed implementation plans. You know, what I'll say is, obviously, you know, every school district does it differently. For instance, our school just district locally took each of the priorities and, you know, created sub-teams that included, you know, members of the administration, teachers and staff, et cetera. So, you know, it's up, up to the administration to, you know, identify, you know, what is that best practice to create those completed implementation plans. So that's, that's going to be the next step. So, you know, ideally, we'll have desired outcomes for each objective, strategies, and, and measures. In addition, generally, there, while each objective, if possible, could have a measure, generally, there are, like, really, really critical measures that, let's say, there's 10 critical measures that Ashland Public Schools decides are the most critical. These are items that you would put on a dashboard, you know, on the, you know, a shared website that not only the administration, staff, and parents could see, but the overall community. So it's, it's a good way to track and monitor the essence of whether we're meeting the strategic plan. So included with this project is, you know, delivery of that strategic dashboard and training to, you know, help with the enhancements and strategic indicators. So that's all I have from a high-level perspective. Any questions from either the administration or school committee, or anything to add, Jim, that I missed?
No, I think you covered everything that, that we had talked about.
So maybe I can, Prem, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. You went off-screen for a sec. I guess, so maybe just some more concrete terms, next steps? Just sort of how do you suggest we move forward from where we are in the process to completing it?
Yeah, I, I think the, the most immediate next step is to approve the strategic plan as a school committee. So, you know, generally, you know, there's a high-level presentation done, kind of in more detail, maybe, you know, 15 to 30 minutes to discuss the strategic plan, and then the school committee formally approves it. In the meantime, you know, I'll work with Jim and Mike to solidify some dates where we can, you know, begin the process, especially that creation of the framework for, you know, design teams to follow, for implementation plans, so that once we get that, you know, formal approval, we can, you know, start, you know, getting to work immediately, you know, when we can. And we'll start, you know, basically charting out those dates, you know, working with Jim and his team to figure out when is the best time to do that.
So Prem, I just want to clarify this. So, so everyone's on the same page. By approval of the plan, what you're really speaking of is making sure that publicly, we, you know, have discussed the vision statement that we've approved, but also the strategic objectives. And once those are finalized, that's, then the onus becomes, goes on to the administration and you to work through developing the implementation plan itself with measurable items, et cetera.
Yep, that is correct.
And does that eventually come back to us as for further approval as well?
That was going to be my next question in terms of, you know, those, those kind of action items and those measurable steps. I just wasn't sure if we were going to have it, because we, I feel like we've had so many amazing conversations about so many issues, but the, the objectives are fairly broad, so they fit a lot of different pieces. And I wanted to, I just would love to know where the clarity comes in about where those are. So if we're going to see those actionable steps at a later phase, that answers my question.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. It's, it's, we, once these are approved, right, really because the work, the heavy load, if you will, is going to be on the buildings, the teachers, all the educators, to actually implement, right? So we need to, as a team, administrative team, and it's a large team, with feedback from teachers, to find out what's reasonable, what is actually something that we can accomplish and implement, then we'll bring that back to the board. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, before it's totally 100% finalized.
And we'll have the opportunity to give you some feedback on our thoughts about that. Okay.
100%. Yep, 100%. Yep.
Correct.
It's just, we're, it's sort of, you know, Prem and I were having this conversation last week, that really, we have to take the action right now, instead of having you come aboard and say, okay, we want this done, or we need to present you with actionable items, and then you can say, okay, maybe think about this as well. We'd like to see, maybe focus on implementing X. Great, awesome. So, but again.
And that's how we've done it in the past, essentially.
Correct.
I mean, that makes the most sense. And then, and then, and we have made tweaks afterwards.
Sure. I just wasn't sure where that came in.
It's at the end of the cycle.
Before we, okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Do we, do we have an idea of when that, that initial, well, we talk about approving a strategic plan, but we haven't, we don't have a document yet, right?
Correct.
So I assume we, we start with a document, that then gets appended to with, with the actual things, and it's kind of a, a kind of a living document, right? But what time do, what time?
especially that creation of the framework for, you know, design teams to follow for implementation plans. So that once we get that, you know, formal approval, we can, you know, start, you know, getting to work immediately, you know, when we can. And we'll start, you know, basically charting out those dates, you know, working with Jim and his team to figure out when is the best time to do that.
So Prem, I just want to clarify this. So, so everyone's on the same page. By approval of the plan, what you're really speaking of is making sure that publicly we, you know, have discussed the vision statement that we've approved, but also the strategic objectives. And once those are finalized, that's, then the onus becomes, goes on to the administration and you to work through developing the implementation plan itself with measurable items, et cetera.
Yep, that is correct.
Okay.
And does that eventually come back to us as for further approvals as well?
That was going to be my next question in terms of, you know, those, those kind of action items and those measurable steps. I just wasn't sure if we were going to have it. Because we, I feel like we've had so many amazing conversations about so many issues. But the, the objectives are fairly broad, so they fit a lot of different pieces. And I wanted to, I just would love to know where the clarity comes in about where those are. So if we're going to see those actionable steps at a later phase, that answers my question.
Yeah, that's, it's exactly right. Tina, it's, it's, we, once these are approved, right? Really because the work, the heavy load, if you will, is going to be on the buildings, the teachers, all the educators to actually implement, right? So we need to, as a team, administrative team, and it's a large team with feedback from teachers, to find out what's reasonable, what is actually something that we can accomplish and implement. Then we'll bring that back to the board, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, before it's totally hundred percent finalized.
And we'll have the opportunity to give you some feedback on our thoughts about that.
A hundred percent, yep, a hundred percent, yep.
Correct.
It's just, we're, it's sort of, you know, Prem and I were having this conversation last week that really, we have to take the action right now. Instead of having you come aboard and say, okay, we want this done, or we need to present you with actionable items. And then you can say, okay, maybe think about this as well. We'd like to see, maybe focus on implementing X. Great, awesome.
Yeah.
So, but again.
And that's how we've done it in the past, essentially. I mean, that makes the most sense. And then, and then, and we have made tweaks afterwards.
I just wasn't sure where that came in.
It's at the end of the cycle, right?
Okay, that makes sense.
Do we, do we have an idea of when that initial? Well, we talk about approving a strategic plan, but we haven't, we don't have a document yet, right? So I assume we start with a document that then gets appended to with the actual things. And it's kind of a, a kind of a living document, right? But what time, what timeframe do we think we're going to have that initial thing to approve?
So we, we feel comfortable that the objectives, because we've been through this, that we can actually begin, and Prem, we wanted to have this conversation tonight here. So then we can set our dates as an admin team with Prem to go through the process that we need to take. End result in terms of having a plan with actionable items, deliverables, measurables, and then eventually the dashboard is, to me, something that we need to have done by the retreat. That, that's a real firm timeline.
But first step is the creation of that initial document that summarizes everything we've done.
Correct.
Voting on the vision.
When do we approve, you know, I guess?
So that would be in the May meeting is what we talked about. Correct, Prem?
Yeah.
Yeah, the May third meeting. Or is it the third or whatever it is? Yeah, yeah, that's what we talked about, Paul, yep. Because we don't have another meeting this month.
Functionally, assuming, I think everything, we've talked through this. Probably not going to be further changes to it. So you could actually, you could be working on it more or less now with, you know, a little bit of open mind on that. But so we would take the vote on more or less parts of what we're seeing on our screens, which is the strategic priorities, the mission statement, the vision statement and the strategic objectives. And then between now and July-ish.
Correct.
You'll work out the more specific pieces. And we'll be talking at the retreat, to Tina's point, about those pieces.
Hundred percent. And, and, and I want to, you know, Prem, this is news to you because we just actually talked about it this morning at the leadership meeting. But part of the, the school improvement plans that would typically come before the board as well. And, you know, we pushed that off last year because we were hoping to have this document. What I shared today with the principals were the objectives. So they will be having their school improvement plans and their meetings with their site councils over the next month. I think it's the twenty-eighth typically, right around that Thursday we come back. We're meeting as a team before then. As they begin finalizing their school improvement plans, they at least know the buckets, right? So some of their actionable items will probably eventually end up in this document as well. But at least they now know, okay, this is where the school committee is headed in terms of the objectives. And that's what we've always done is, school improvement plans would relate back to the overall strategic plan, right? The blueprint. So, so they now have this document. So I'm hoping it's not going to change significantly if, if, if at all in terms of the objectives. And I didn't want to share that with them until I felt comfortable and that was tonight's meeting. So they just got it today, yep.
Makes sense to me.
Other questions or any questions for Prem while he's here? Thank you, Prem.
Prem, thank you so much.
Yeah, no worries. I'm going to stop the share and hopefully I don't ruin your online meeting.
No, we're good.
You're good.
And you can tell the truth about your voice, so it's all right. I mean, this group is accepting of the fact that you were at the final four, you're a UConn guy, and your whole family was there and you were yelling. So it's okay, just, just tell it like it is.
Yep, and I have a sore throat though, too.
Exactly.
Price you pay.
It was wonderful, but yeah, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Prem. We'll be in touch, you and I, I'll get in touch with you.
All right, take care, have a good night.
Thanks.
Excellent, so now we are moving to this transportation fees and waitlist.
Yeah, and before I get there, I, I will bring up that Prem and I did have a conversation maybe a week, week ago, anyway, probably. He's going to be the lead on the rest of the, of the project. I mean, he's been the one who's been with us most of the time and Matt was there. But it's really, Prem is taking over, if you will, for the entire. So you will not see Matt in any more of their sessions that we have. It'll, it'll just be Prem, so FYI. So Prem works specifically in wholly for H Y A A. So Matt is the superintendent, so it's been kind of difficult, so, yep. So transportation fees and waitlist. So as you know, transportation, this year has been a struggle, one, getting enough buses. Really, it's been a couple routes, routes four, eight and ten specifically, at the middle and the high school levels. We're not suggesting any increase in our fees. So that's, the, the fees are going to stay the same for next year. It's a three hundred and sixty dollar individual bus fee transportation with seven twenty max for a family, okay? The one thing I want to stress, and it's within our policy, we're concerned about safety, right? And the safety of our students and our bus drivers. And what we have not done in the past is really stayed firm to our policy, which was the use of a waitlist as needed. And within the policy, so we're required again, K through six, outside of two miles to transport. And so Chris has done, and thank you for this, he's done some, some, you know, background work in terms of the number of students currently that are outside that two mile that were required by law to transport. And again, it's not just those students, but also free and reduced students are, are part of that mix as well, right? So, so if it's.
Is it, sorry, Jim, is the free and reduced within the two miles? Or is that? Because you just said it's.
Two miles doesn't apply to the free and reduced.
Correct, right, it does not apply to the two miles.
Regardless of the.
Regardless of, right, regardless, yeah, irregardless. Tomorrow. That being said, so as we're going through the process, we want to make sure that, again, we are comfortable with fifty-two students being assigned to a bus, especially at the middle high school, right? In terms of the, the two, two individuals per seat, right? Twenty-six seats. And we can get up to seventy at the elementary school. It's not ideal, even at that number, so.
Is there some like legal standard?
No, no, we're good, legally, we're fine. It's just, it's just safety for us and that's our concern.
Right.
So the way we're thinking of approaching it this year is because we've got to get the letters out and have people sign up, is for each bus, we got an idea of the route, right? And is, we know how many kids are currently, we're obligated by law to transport. So we'll take those number of students and assign them to the buses. But we want to save about five extra seats, what'd you say, five to ten, Chris, somewhere around there? For additional enrollees throughout the year, throughout the summer. Because some of them might be outside that K six, outside of two miles that we have to transport. So then, as we begin the process of collecting the registrations, first come, first served with a waitlist after that. And, and that's clear within our policy that we can handle, we can do that. But I, but we need to make sure that families fully understand that. Because in the years past, we haven't really held to that waitlist. We've just added and added and added. And what it has done is three of the routes this year has made it untenable. It's unsafe. And we've tried adding a bus since October?
Yeah, definitely since October.
Yeah, we've tried adding, we can't get a bus and a driver. So we were break, we were going to break up those three routes, but we can't, I mean.
You can't get a bus.
We don't have the capacity. So, so that being said, all I'm asking you is to just approve the, the same fee as last year so we can get the information out. We will clearly communicate with families that a waitlist will happen and, and we will need it. It may, it won't happen for every route, we know that. But there are some routes that it's, it's going to have to happen, so.
And so is the biggest, excuse me, biggest concerns in middle high school run? It's not the elementary?
Correct.
So, I mean, that really means that the two mile K to six piece, that's not, we're not having compliance problems.
That's correct.
Realistically.
We are not having compliance issues.
And do we have an obligation to transport students who aren't free and reduced lunch at the seven to twelve level or only K to six?
Only, I believe only K to six legally, right? But we, but our, our, our practice has been K to twelve.
Yeah, and that's, I'm not, I'm not trying to go some other direction, I'm just trying to understand the issue. So, so where this practically speaking likely to be the issue is really just the older kids, seven to twelve on that run.
Yeah, no, it is, and it's, it's, it's a challenge, right? I mean, if we can get another bus and, and we've sort of started, we've budgeting for an additional bus. I mean, we have the capacity with our transportation fees to add another bus. It's around seventy-nine, eighty thousand dollars a year. That being said, you know, we will continue to, to work with Connolly, our bus company, transportation company, to see if, if they've got another bus that we can add the eighteenth bus in. And then that would alleviate these issues. But, but to start the process, we need to put our, put the line in the sand and say, this is where we are. You need to get your, so many families sign up in August, the day before school begins, and you've got a hundred, two hundred, literally, hundred to two hundred applicants for transportation who just walk in and say, give me my bus pass and I want you on a bus tomorrow. It doesn't work that way and it can't.
You know, and particularly this year, even before trying to add the route, we weren't even giving out the bus passes for a while.
That's right, because we had three buses that didn't give out the passes. That's right.
And at the beginning of the year, it was like packed in there like sausages. My, my kids trying to ride the bus were like, it's gotten better, I think, just because people aren't riding the bus.
Con Street and.
Yeah, it's bus four, eight and ten, that's all.
Well, you know, I've also heard, you know, feedback from parents who have kids on some of these crowded routes that, from feedback from their kids, I don't know how true this is, that there are kids that are on that bus that don't have bus passes.
Correct.
So is there like, because, so this could technically, like kids see a bus stop, they still go and get on, right? Like, what's the enforcement mechanism to make sure that those families who actually paid for their bus pass and got everything in on time are the ones riding the bus?
I will not tell you the number of conversations that Mr. Matthew has had with Connolly Bus Company, who is responsible, they own the drivers, right? The drivers themselves are hesitant at times to say, show me your pass. We have made it really clear from the National Public School side, that is your obligation. You need to ask the child to show the bus pass. And if they don't have a bus pass for that bus, they shouldn't be getting on the bus. Now, that'll always change when it's winter time and, listen, inclement weather. We're going to do the right thing. But that being said, we did, probably a month ago, maybe, Chris, maybe a little less. We, the, the last conversation we had, we did ask, and we did have a number of, of students who we identified, whom we identified and said, you can't be on the bus. So it's real to you, what you're, what you're explaining? But it's also a function of the drivers not wanting to confront families and kids. And I get that. So when it's reported to us, the deans and the principals are dealing with those issues as well.
But is it something that we can put in our contract with Connolly? Like we understand they're your employees, but here's some of the terms of employment?
No, not really. I mean, it's, I mean, we have a contract with them, they're their employees. The, the expectation is there, they know what it is, it just be.
It's just the personality of the driver.
But once that occurs.
Say to a six-year-old.
Right, get off it, right? But as long as we know it, and again, if, if children are getting on buses inappropriately, it's reported to the main office, the deans and the assistant principals are dealing with it. But the first stop, no point in that, it has to be with, with the bus driver.
They have to identify, even if they say this child doesn't have a pass and he let him on.
Right, I was just going to say, even if it's, they're reporting it to the school, right? Yeah, in the school.
I saw four kids today that I don't recognize.
So we are doing those things and, and it's, and it has been, I mean, like I said, you don't want to know how many conversations and emails that Chris goes back and forth with Connolly Bus on in terms of their responsibility and making sure. Our responsibility is to get the passes out, we get that. We did hold off on a lot of the passes because we thought we were getting another bus and we didn't want to have to redistribute four sets of passes. And that's literally what we would have had to have done, four, eight, ten, and we're moving another bus around.
So with creating the waitlist, you're basically going to eliminate that. So everyone's going to have a pass the first day of school, ready to go and.
Unless they sign up at the last day.
Right.
Right.
And then if it's a bus that's overcrowded, they're going to be on the waitlist anyway, so.
And that's why we want to hold some seats, right? For those who move into the community who are required by law.
So I guess, does this change anything about the, the target deadline we have? Because we're not, right, so we typically have like a May first, May fifteenth.
Yeah, because we, usually we get this out in March.
Right, so whatever that deadline is, I guess what I'm thinking about is if we're really going to enforce a waitlist, does that impact what deadline we're giving people? Or do we still just need that separately for operational purposes?
Yeah, the reason we're doing that is to encourage them to, so they can make up routes, right?
But so I'm, my, what's going on in my head is sort of, okay, look, if we're telling everybody you get in there early or you're not getting a spot.
Well, even if they get in, let's assume, Mark, everyone got in early. It's still going to be, you could still have a waitlist, right? It's still going to be, as we open up and we stamp it, number one, number two, number three, number four. And then, as we assign them to buses, you potentially could have everyone in by the deadline, but still not have a seat. It's possible.
And the only thing you're holding the seats back for are students who move in.
Potential.
That we'd have to put out.
Correct.
So that's really, again, the K to six issue.
That's right. And it's about five, and I think we did, you know, twenty, we said twenty-five percent of our students in the district are, are free and reduced. And so if we just generally think, hold out, and we had, what, two hundred plus?
Yeah, I think the, the number was about three, three hundred, free and reduced.
Right. And then we had, I forgot the number you sent me, Chris, the total number of two hundred plus students enrolled throughout the summer.
And, and if.
And unenrolled as well.
Oh, yeah, the net between the incoming students versus the outgoing students leaving the district is about eight, seven to eight, which is why we're recommending between five and ten to hold for.
And I assume you could probably map our current free and reduced students to bus routes.
Yeah, we can.
You got to get an idea if some, you might need way more towards the ten or, or something like that.
Yep, so, right, certain buses might need a little bit more, Paul, that's right. So we can look at our, we can look at our current, and, and again, it really starts with the K through six, right? And the new K students, what I've seen other districts do is start publishing, if you're a Warren student, for instance, these are the streets that are outside the two mile radius that, that we will transport, that we're obligated to. So you can click on it and say, okay, you know, my child is going to be outside that radius and I'm going to know that I don't have to pay and my child will be on the bus. And, you know, so where we are, yeah, we can roughly identify how many kids will be on bus three.
Say, it doesn't, it's, Ashland's such a small town, and I think about where our two, two elementary schools are, I feel like there are probably relatively few kids outside two miles, but relatively few.
Relatively, but data show.
More than you'd think.
We have two, we have two hundred and ninety Warren students who are outside of one point five miles, right? I mean, this is how it broke down. We have three hundred and seventy-three Mendez students outside of that radius and we have a hundred and thirty middle school students. So it's pretty, it is actually a, a, a large number, yeah, yeah, so.
Guess we have everybody spread on the town lines or something.
So, I mean.
Would we be asking for full payment, right? Like because it's going to be a mad dash? It's also going to be.
Well, yeah, we do, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
I just think part of the benefit too is, you know, when we have the deadline of, now, you know, we'll extend it a little, you know, enough for the communication. And now that we're a week or two behind, you know, aged, we'll also be able to, you know, there's always folks that come in late, you know, like, you know, August. But getting them ahead of time, you're able to identify what buses are going to be overcrowded and look to see if you can, you know, reroute some, you know, look at the routing and things of that nature, too.
Yeah, I mean, the people I feel for, quite frankly, are the ones that move into town, you know, over the summer. So they have, they'll never see the communication now. And then they'll show up and, and, you know, maybe it's fine, but they theoretically could move in and.
Yeah, so, so I guess, I guess let's make sure that communication is in any kind of registration packet they get.
It is.
And then on, on the website, if you go to transportation and just make sure that, that really pops.
We give it to all the realtors in town, tell them, like, you know, you got to buy here, just checking the bus thing.
So, so Aaron, but to your point too, we do have a discounted, so if you pay by that May first deadline instead of the three sixty, it was two ninety. So there's a discount, so. So we're going to, we're going to have to push this back and we'll have to figure out, I'll, I'll work with Tamara and Chris and the registration folks to figure out, okay, timing of, of when we need to get this in. It's also Tamara's second year working with the system and the busing and transportation. So it should go a lot more smoothly than it did this year, so.
So you need a motion.
I just, just an approval of, of the current rate of three hundred and sixty dollars per student with seven hundred and twenty dollars maximum per family.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jimmy only mentioned one, one rate in that motion, though. So if we're going to do the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good point.
No, he, no, he mentioned a rate.
With a discounted rate of two ninety.
Rate and a cap, he didn't, he didn't mention a.
I heard what he meant to say.
With a discounted rate of two hundred and ninety dollars. With a discounted rate of two hundred and ninety dollars if paid before June first.
Or, or whatever date you deem is appropriate.
Erin, Paul, Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Beautiful, great, thanks.
You said that in full earlier, so. We knew what we were talking about.
Yeah, I think that was the understanding, but just get the words on the right.
Have it clear.
Yep. Uh, Nezdeck?
Yeah, um, this is just an update, uh, as we go through the process of looking at our schools, and I'm gonna bring this up and share my screen. Uh, I tend to have Nezdeck run our, um, our enrollment. Get rid of this. Oh, it does here, well, it should just be page. They don't give me the real stuff, the real Adobe.
Talk to the boss.
Yeah, right.
Get a real computer.
Yeah, it is, yeah. So, so I, so this is the spring update in March, and, and the only reason I wanted to bring it up to you is, it fluctuates, right, from last March to November when we do it, and then when I ask them to, uh, do another enrollment, um, update in, uh, the spring. And what happens is, I'm always cognizant of what is it, I'm worried about, uh, moving forward. I had shared with you, I think, in a spreadsheet, in your, in your document, in your packet, uh, that, that just shows the three, um, categories. And the one thing I wanted to show is this, um, not, you know, projected enrollment, see if we can get this a little bit bigger. And what happens is, as we're looking at the district itself, and where we are, and, and the concerns, when I first saw this document, it, it sort of, um, took me, you know, took me back. And because when we're looking at twenty-four, you're, if you look at the projected enrollment and grade combinations, and you go from two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, straight down, you know, for four or five years. Remember, Nezdeck says, we're gonna look at this in a five-year window. The five years we feel relatively comfortable with, they're looking at birth rates, they're looking at building projects. I historically went back, uh, nine years, uh, almost nine years, eight years, to see how accurate were they in terms of their projections, right? Um, and, and they're within, you know, twenty to forty students, uh, over a course of a, you know.
This is total.
Five-year window, yeah, yeah. So the middle school, they had off, like, they really, like, a couple of years ago, when we had got that huge bubble in the middle school, that was not project, projected in two thousand seventeen. Like, in two thousand seventeen, when they looked at those numbers, they were like, no, the middle school, and then all of a sudden, the middle school was up seventy kids. Like, where did that come from? And, and it's unexplainable, we can't quite put our finger on it, with the exception of more families moved in. We saw an increase in our L population, we saw an increase in, in a lot of families, um, you know, moving into the community because we had affordable housing. But twenty-four, twenty-five, you look at the third grade in the sixth, third through, three through five and six through eight, and you can see those are big numbers, right? Um, six hundred and eighty-four kids at Mendez in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We've never, that number was never really projected that high before. The middle school, when we talked about during the budget process, those half teams and the scheduling. My concern, and I'm only bringing it up because of this, is we start thinking about the future, uh, and we're already thinking about the twenty-four, twenty-five budget now, that those half teams are critically important, no, no matter what the schedule even looks like at, at the middle school. If our, if their projections are right, and the numbers actually are not declining at the middle school, but they're actually going to six eighty-six, six eighty-six, seven twenty-two, seven thirty-three over the next five years, then it's, you know, it's just concerning to me. And I don't know, I can't sit here and say, these numbers are a hundred percent accurate. Uh, we won't know until October, when we send in enrollment data to the state, and then we send that data to Nezdeck, and they modify their, um, their numbers.
How close are their current year projections?
So their current year projection, again, it's, it's the, that's sort of the difficulty. Because I ship them information in October, and they re, and they adjust it. So you've gotta go back to the following March to figure out what that information is. So it's a good question, Mr. Kendall. And I'm gonna stop sharing, and I'm gonna then pull up a document that I've been trying to create that shows just that.
Well, it's also just interesting to see the shift in the, like, the, just looking five years ahead, like, nine to twelve goes up by nearly a hundred students, but then you look at three to five and it goes down by like thirty students.
Right.
Like, the shift in terms of where the kids are is, that, that's a pretty big swing.
So.
Too late to put another couple of rooms on there, Paul?
No, well, we have, the beauty of it is.
We have the building.
Yeah, we have flexibility, that, that, the building design is so good. Yeah, the high school is what you're worried about, so, I mean, this is.
And not worried about it, it's just interesting that.
So, so Paul, to, to answer your question, this is what I started doing. I started taking the data from previous, uh, Nezdeck reports, right, and said, okay, in.
Sorry, Jim, is this a document you gave us or something?
I do not, I don't know if I provided this one to you, this might have been.
This is the one you provided, the one you had up, I, I don't know where you got that from, it wasn't in the.
Oh, no, we had that one.
Okay, either way, you should have had it, but it should have been in the folder. It would have been the Nezdeck report, but either way, so here, here we are. There were three versions of the school year, going back to March of twenty-two, November of twenty-two, after the, the actual enrollment occurred and we submitted stuff to the state, and now March of twenty-three. Right, so, so we've got three data points for this year's class, if you will.
Column D, Jim, is actuals, right?
Column D is, um, that should be actual, yes, correct, as of three seventeen, that's right. So, um, so when we look at, to your question, um, the one ninety is a projec-, yeah, see, that's the problem, you gotta, the way I set this up.
The projections mixed in with the actual?
Correct, so the twelfth grade, so I've, I've started looking at next year already, that's part of the problem. We already, we're anticipating a hundred and ninety students in the kindergarten. Uh, so to your question, Paul, what should have been is, one ninety, so if you look at the first, the kindergarten number, three twenty-one, was one ninety-four, that's what they projected. We're, we're at one eighty-one. So, so they're off a little bit, and so they adjusted from March to November, and then this most recent shows twenty-seven ninety-two versus the twenty-eight sixty-nine in November. So they're off significantly, right? And I've said to this group before, do you remember the class I'm really worried about right now? It's a kindergarten class, right? Because at a hundred and seventy-five students or a hundred and eighty students, where are those students? Two years ago, they projected two hundred students in that class. Where are they? So that, that concerns me, and I, I don't think we're gonna have a real good handle on our enrollment until the fall.
Like, where are we at right at, right now at Mendez, what's our enrollment currently?
Our enrollment at Mendez currently, six, yeah, I just, yeah, I'm gonna stop sharing because it's easier for me to go back to my enrollment information without all that. Yes, enrollment. Currently, Paul, we are at, um, Warren six sixty-four, oh, excuse me, six thirty-three, Mendez six forty-four, okay? So, that, I mean, that's mid-March.
And because they have, they have, especially, particularly at Mendez, two big jumps in the next two years.
Right.
Which I'm trying to understand.
We know there's a big jump because second going into third. We know that, because that's a two hundred and forty-plus class. I mean, that's two forty-five.
We've talked about that before.
Yeah, that's why we're adding, the third grade is gonna have eleven teachers.
Right, right, yeah.
It's, the concern becomes, for me, it's that middle school population, like, I, I anticipated a decline, but they're saying, nope, it's gonna be that six eighty and a seven hundred, and then the high school's gonna get close to a thousand at some point. You know, which is fine, it's designed for that, we're not, it's just staffing, and those are the, you know, it's more of the budgetary impact that we're gonna have as a district. And again, I'm not trying to be an alarmist here with these numbers, I'm just sharing them with you because I'm getting three data points throughout the year, right?
Possible.
Jim, you said you're concerned about where these like thirty theoretical kindergartners are. Are you concerned because we're gonna get flooded with thirty registrations?
Yes.
Or that, like, cause the opposite, if, if they don't, like, if that doesn't happen, that's actually a little bit better for us, right?
Yeah, yeah, so Erin, it's a good question. We've actually called around, Pete and Kate have called around at every, like, private daycare, preschool, like, do you have any? Six-year-olds, do you have any?
Right, anyone we should be expecting.
Anybody coming? And so they're doing their due diligence, and we're not finding them, but, so.
Did we not have this concern last year as well a little bit?
We, we did, because when they came here, we were like, this is, so we had like a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and fifty-six kids.
And, and last year, we were concerned also, the, the COVID, that people might, the COVID impact, that they might be holding them back a bit more.
But I feel like it never materialized in the worst-case scenario.
Well, we picked up about twenty kids.
Yeah.
And it got to the one seventy number. We're at one eighty-plus now.
But, but that's what we always expect, right? We expect fifteen to twenty, uh, from K to, to one, increase from, from ones that were doing private kindergarten or something like that.
Yeah, yep. And, and, and again, if you go back through historically, and I track this, there are certain grade levels where we get ins and outs, right? I mean, there are a couple, we, I think we've had three grades, I wish I had it, because I haven't. Then there were three grades that traditionally have ten or more kids come into the system, whereas the others net out to be minus three, plus three, minus four, plus four. But there were like three specific grades, um, the middle school was one, um, I think it was maybe fifth grade, I forget exactly the grades, but there were at least three that had, on average, more than ten kids in, increase from one year to the next.
Is freshman year one of them?
No, because we lose kids to Keith. Yeah, yeah, so, so we might lose fourteen and pick up fourteen, but the number stays net, right? It is interesting to track, um, but it's not, um.
Well, it's not a, it's perfect science either, there's one thing about, you know, real estate and births, but people's personal circumstances, you can't predict.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, and, and we're starting to see, you know, some of that stuff now, right? And again, it's more, more out of, like, even this year, we look at it, you know, fifty-three less students in the kindergarten. It's just, it's just an anomaly, I don't know. But everything else is right around, fifth grade, eleven kids, at, higher than the year before, which, again, it's right around ten typically. The juniors, for some reason, went up, but kids are, were in private school, and all of a sudden, they're coming back. That's not typically a higher number. The second grade went up seven, right? So, so there are a couple of classes that we continue to watch, uh, and we have to make adjustments in the summer with numbers of teachers, um, but.
Jim, it might be worth Pete reaching out to the Moms Club? Thanks. Um, it might be worth, um, Pete reaching out to the Moms Club.
Okay.
Because they would have a pulse on the moms with young, like, preschool-age kids, but also that might not be in either a, a school that we're reaching out to, or, and, and they just might have a better pulse on what they're seeing as far as the population.
Yeah, because they have an under-five age group, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Because I, I know a lot, at least in my neighborhood, we're seeing a lot more nannies and au pairs versus going to a center, and I think that's a COVID change of, you know, family comfort level. But those families are still maybe, e- e- even if their kids are not involved, they might even just be on the message board, and it might be a good way to get a different pulse.
Great, so that's, again, it's just more FYI.
Keep us in the loop about.
Oh, we will. I mean, I'm always concerned about it.
Yeah, I know you are.
So, school choice is next, uh, again, as you've, it's a good segue.
Right.
Look at our numbers, they're high.
So you just say no?
Uh, no.
No, we're not saying no.
We're not saying no, um, I'm not comfortable opening up any more school choice seats, um, other than, I think I wrote, let me see here, K and one, because the one, five seats in each. There are no other, where is that? I don't feel comfortable opening up any more seats than that, right? So it's, um, as we look at the numbers, we currently have twenty-eight students who are, um, anticipated in school choice. Uh, I've, I've, I've done an anticipated enrollment for K of a hundred and ninety, based on where we are currently today with, with those who enrolled. We're at one seventy-two as of March thirty-first, we're with first grade students. I would like to add five stu-, five seats to K and one, and that's it. Do not add any more seats across the board. It hurts us from a revenue standpoint, we have twenty-nine families that have already asked about school choice, with fifteen being freshmen, next year's freshman class, um, three juniors, and the rest are sporadic. Uh, we have three K and, and, um, one, one first grade so far. We will not fill all five seats, um, historically, we have not. So this would, you know, potentially get us, you know, ten seats if we needed them. So, I, I don't feel any, I don't feel comfortable adding to any other class at this point. We could revisit it, um, I, again, I looked up the Mass General Law about can you go back and, and add seats to, uh, grades, you can.
I think we've done that once.
We have, after we've looked at it, correct? Yep, yep, so.
And, and it's probably just important to note, the agenda says public hearing, but we do not.
Yeah, I, I apologize, yeah, we don't need the public hearing legally, because we're not disbanding our.
Not changing our status.
We're not changing our status in using school choice.
And we've already approved it, and we're continuing the program, so it's just a matter of how many seats.
That's right.
Just curious, like, do we have data on how many people that live in Ashland are doing school choice for other towns?
Yes, we have thirty-five students, Tommy, um, who are in, uh, other, school choice in other communities. So, the breakout, um, you know, is, well, no, I take that back. We have thirty-five current students who choice in, we have seven.
Your document says fourteen choice out.
Fourteen out, and I'm trying to do the math quickly, five, uh, from like Holliston, so they're all over the grade levels. Five at Holliston, three, six of them are all virtual, which I found interesting, and that increased out of COVID. These were COVID, um, three or seven.
So, yeah, I never even thought, so you can choice to a virtual?
Yeah, because they're just Commonwealth, they're just public schools, like, yeah, yeah.
I never, never thought about choosing to.
Yeah, so Framingham, but fourteen's the number for you, uh, thirty-five we have in, fourteen out.
So it does not net out like at all?
So, no, it helps us.
It's better to have more in than out.
And, and the cost is the same for, for virtual?
Correct.
That's, that's a different business, business model. You make out a little better, you don't, you don't have the.
So that's, I mean, that's where we are. So I'm just recommending, uh, to allow for five kindergarten seats and one, and five first grade seats for next, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I move to accept as presented. I move to accept as presented.
Second?
All in favor, Erin?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
And my last thing tonight is, uh, what we've done historically, uh, is with the superintendence evaluation, the summative evaluation, so it's the end of the year evaluation, when we have contested, um, school committee races, we've always had the summative evaluation before the end of a potential cycle, right? So, because we have a contested race, this means, uh, I'm asking the school committee, the five who are here, uh, to, to undergo the summative evaluation, uh, by, in, by May, to have that first, um, school committee meeting in May be the actual summative evaluation. I have provided you the documents, what I'm suggesting is this, um, and I wrote it in the letter, that everyone get to the chair, their evaluation by April twenty. I have provided you the documents, what I'm suggesting is this, um, and I wrote it in the letter, um, that everyone get to the chair, their evaluation by April twenty-fourth, so it can be compiled. So that's a few weeks. I am also asking you, if you want to sit with me to go through the goals and/or the, uh, rubric, feel, you know, reach out to me and we can sit. I have created a Google shared doc drive with not only the five goals that we set at the beginning of the year, with where we are with the goals, but also the evidence, some evidence towards those goals. In addition to Massachusetts, you know, their evaluation tool has certain indicators. And within those indicators, I've added evidence as well. So, I will reshare it, you should have shared access, but I did that back in the middle of, a few months ago, I will reshare it.
Thank you.
And then you just have reading access to it, um, and if you were like, hey, I'm curious about this, um, I certainly would love to sit down with you before you write everything up for Lori. One of the, the key documents that you'll see in there is this, this two-page that the Department of Ed puts out, it says, okay, here are standard one, standard two, standard three, and standard four, structural leadership, da-da-da-da-da, and it talks about, okay, these are some items we'd like to see the state for evidence. So that's what you'll see in those indicator files, some evidence that relates to these standards. Now, they overlap, right? They overlap with the goals, so you'll see some evidence that's identical with the goals that are also in the indicators. You won't see, well, for instance, when we're looking at an analysis of the amount, the number of evaluations that our staff does, our admin team on staff. That's, you know, that's a, something you've probably never seen before. So Mike and I were going through and saying, okay, you know, how many evaluations have we done? And where, how does it relate to a professional status teacher, a new teacher, et cetera, and are we meeting contractual obligations? So that really falls under, you know, standard one, instructional leadership, um, aggregate, um, classroom observation data. Okay, it's just a piece of evidence for you, I've probably never shared it with you, um, in what has happened in the past, Karen would have a binder or like a box with all this data in there. I'm just putting it in Google Drive so you can have access to it at your leisure.
And, um, have you sent us the form that we're supposed to use?
I did, yeah, in the Word document.
I don't recall seeing that.
She didn't, okay, it's in the, I just printed it out, it was in that folder.
In tonight's meeting folder?
Yep. It was in, it was in the agenda folder.
Okay, well, yes, I can't say I opened every document in, on that list.
Cause I printed it out from there.
Okay, we'll find it.
Either way, I will resend it.
If we can't find it, we'll.
Is it there?
Yeah, I think so.
It should be there.
Yeah.
Yeah. We probably didn't open it if we didn't have to address it right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, there, she sends two things, one's the.
Well, what happens is.
Hold on, she sent something, yeah, this is it, this is.
It's there, yeah.
It, it just wasn't there originally.
Okay.
So, so when she sends it out, I download it, but it wasn't there then?
Right, because I was updating, uh, some of the evidence and some of the, um, the, the goal information, right? So, and, and it's still fluid, uh, I'm still updating some of the, like.
Right.
Some of the goal stuff that we're doing.
Right. Right, normally, like, not normally, I mean, it, when there's not a contested race, we would have an additional, like, six weeks really of, of information, so. So it's, it, we, we all understand that it's an ongoing process, but we're just trying to make sure that this board, uh, can complete that work.
That's right. So what I will do, Tina, to, to, and Mark, I will reshare the most recent Word document that has all of that information, that, the, the evaluation procedures. A place where you can type it in and send it to Lori.
Perfect.
Okay, I will, I will make sure you got that.
I'm ma-, I'm downloading, saving my own form now, so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, sometimes it's hard to find it, like, if it doesn't come under, like, the right email heading or whatever, it's hard to search for it. Um, I do have a request, um, we have town meeting on May third, and our next meeting is May fourth. And I'm going out of town on the morning of May fourth, and if you guys are going to town meeting and you are available to have a, this meeting, the hour before town meeting in the high school library. And that way we don't have to do two nights, and also it allows me to do this in person, instead of trying to sign in from probably a very noisy place. I'm willing to do whatever, but if you're free, and that works for everybody, May third before town meeting?
Yep.
So we just keep our meeting to an agenda that's only gonna be an hour?
We'll keep it to an hour, um, and we'll make sure when we look at what's, what the topics are, I mean, if there's something really critical that's gonna take longer than that, then we'll let you know if there needs to be an additional meeting or. Or we need more than an hour.
Yeah, so, so anything that we're not confident, because obviously, how many's gonna start on, on time?
It's gonna start at seven, but if we can start at six or even five-thirty, if we find out that we have a heavier agenda than we anticipate.
Yeah.
It's fine by me, I mean, well, we should have an idea by, um, by Monday of what the agenda's gonna look like for May anyway.
Okay, and if it's looking like too heavy, then we'll either see if an earlier time on that same night works, so we can have a longer meeting, or, um, there is the possibility of having that second meeting the next night. But if we're trying to get a, a meeting off the calendar when we're already, already getting together, then that would be ideal.
Yeah.
Are, are we, are we thinking that Karen's thing is gonna be on that, uh, that meeting as well?
Yes, yep, yep.
Which I'll talk about later, so.
We're not starting, starting, um, site council presentations at that point, are we?
No, we would do that after.
Okay, cause they.
No second meeting in May.
Okay, yeah, they can take a little time.
Yep.
Just based on the calendar, this really leaves next week to meet with you, right? Cause the week after is April break, and I don't know.
I'm in, oh, April break.
Okay.
So next couple of weeks, if you're running into any trouble, let me know.
Yeah, it gives you two weeks, but I'm in, yes, I'm actually probably out of the office more next week.
But thinking, but thinking the deadlines next week is a great idea for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, Lori?
Get it done before.
Excellent, and also, if there's a, um, you know, if there's something that's not complete, and there's the chance that it will get complete, you know, in May or June, I, I haven't seen all the details yet. Then, um, yeah, I would address it with Jim if you're not sure how to record it on the evaluation. Just go directly to him and just say, do you anticipate meeting this goal, or, or, you know, just so you can.
Yeah, I think I'm pretty clear in here about where we are and where we're not, like, so like the SEL goal, that will be completed, but it won't be completed until June. Right, so, we, Jen and I, we had that conversation, we know that it'll be done, it's just.
Things that are forthcoming, right, yes.
But if you have more questions about what we're waiting for, you just wanna understand more of that.
I gave an example of the survey that we said we're going to give, but we're not giving it until.
Right, that's our, it's, it's planned, but it's not gonna happen after, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want anybody to feel that they don't have all the information.
Yep.
So, there's.
Are you okay with those meetings being virtual, rather than coming into your office?
Sure, yeah, yeah, whenever you need.
All right, next item. Do you have an update?
Uh, other than, um, I was, um, saddened this, this week to get the news of Izzy, uh, I think, uh, and, and, uh, uh, it was a really, I, I went to the funeral on Monday, and what a beautiful tribute, and for those who, you know, don't really know Izzy or didn't know Izzy, um, what a wonderful man he was, and, and he was someone who would come and, uh, sit in my office, and we'd have conversations about just the town, right? And about things are going, I sat on a number of committees with him, um, and it was, uh, you know, it was bittersweet, but the folks who were there, uh, to see the, the, um, the respect and love that people had for him, uh, not only here in Ashland, but Framingham Fire Department and, and all the folks who were there.
He's, he's hometown Framingham, too.
Yeah, it, it was, uh, you know, it was a touching tribute, and so I'm, I'm glad I was able to, to, to go and, uh, pay, pay my respects for that.
Thank you for bringing that up, he was a good, a wonderful community servant, I, I remember meeting him way back in the beginning.
Yeah, and so really, last week, I think Paul and I must have given days and days upon of tours of, of the Mendez, uh, with, with staff.
There, there was a quick context switch, I was like, what are you talking about?
Yeah, super tense update. The, the, um, the building changes literally by the hour. Uh, Paul and I would give a tour, uh, to one group, uh, and they'd take about an hour to go through the school, and by the time that group, we got situated back at the Mendez School, and half hour later, uh, another group was ready to go. Paul and I looked at each other like, huh, that wasn't there the last time we did, we did the tour, uh, even today, uh, we brought John Murray up to look at a lot of the mechanical and customer, it was really like, huh, that wasn't there yesterday, that, like, it's really amazing right now. To, to walk that building and to see the, the minute-by-minute changes, uh, and it's exciting, it's, you know, um, we're not far from the end of the school year, and, uh, they've got a lot of work to do. But that being said.
But you can really see it coming together, it's amazing.
Really see it, so, um, so that's really, uh, all I had was, um, that's going on, obviously, we have no school tomorrow, it's Good Friday, um, and then in a week, we've got, um, one more week, and then we're on, on break, so. Much needed, it's the longest stretch, uh, that March stretch.
And then after we come back from April, it's, the, the rest of the year just flies by.
Yeah, it's really fast, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Mike?
Yeah, so there seems to be, uh, a recent buzz in town, uh, particularly among fifth-grade parents, um, about the potential of the Ashland Public Schools getting rid of accelerated math. And I, I think that it's important that when we hear sometimes this information that gets out there in the public, uh, to come on here, especially during this report, and to debunk any myths or misinformation that may be being spread somehow. So, I wanted to take a moment to just sort of chat about this and where we are, and maybe add some context, or try to add some context on how we may have gotten to this point. So, as you recall, this summer, when, uh, the Equity Audit Team from L and P met with us, one of the, one of the topics of discussion that we, that we discussed for a decent amount of time, was some of the disparities that they found in our high school students who are ultimately taking AP classes and honors classes, and how they are suggesting that we look at our entire, uh, district and, uh, figure out how we can make all of our AP courses and honors courses more accessible to the entire student population, thus making things more equitable and accessible for all of our students. Through that, they, they made some recommendations, one of which was to consider, uh, looking at our middle school math placement process, because that's ultimately how students are getting ready to head towards, for lack of a better term, honors or AP calculus when they become a senior in, in high school. So we, we agreed that these are things that we should be looking at, as a district is really important. Uh, so, this year, we've discussed, uh, a lot of different things during our curriculum meetings, but one of the things that our curriculum team, our math curriculum team has been talking about, is how are we going to be able to make these honors courses or the advanced math more accessible to as many students as possible? More accessible does not mean we are looking to get rid of something, we are looking to, to, to increase, to increase the number of students who are accessing advanced math.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't mean dumb down the things to make it accessible.
Yeah, I'll get there, that, that's, that, that's our goal. Now, this is, this is a challenging thing for us to do, so we understand that there's, this is not something that we can change for the two thousand twenty-two, I mean, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. So, but what we can do is look at some other things that the, the Equity Audit suggested, and we can make our placement process to sixth-grade math more transparent. Folks said that that wasn't a transparent process, that the letter wasn't detailed enough, so Ms. Lorenega, uh, working, uh, in conjunction with Mr. DiGeralimo and myself, uh, formulated a letter that went home, an email that went home to all grade five families this week, that talks about the, the process, what it entails, the data points that are looked at when we're determining students who will be, uh, recommended to go from fifth grade to sixth-grade advanced math, as well as it's giving some greater explanation of what sixth-grade advanced math is, or, or enrichment math, and how both courses, or both sections, whether it be grade six math or grade six advanced math, are teaching the same math standards, however, it's exactly what it says, it's moving at a more advanced pace, therefore, you're able to get a little bit deeper into some of the topics that wouldn't necessarily be covered or needed to be covered by the typical grade six standards, okay? Those students will end up taking grade eight Algebra I. That allows them to take geometry their freshman year in high school, which technically puts you on pace to potentially take calculus as a senior. Students who are in the math class, the grade six math class, the non-advanced class, will end up taking pre-algebra as an eighth-grade student, so they would then take Algebra I as a freshman in high school. That still puts you on pace to complete all of the math requirements that you need to get into an excellent college, and they don't necessarily take calculus as a senior. This is fine, but we do wanna say, or look at the fact that we may be determining this, this path a little bit early, a little bit early. Because ultimately, some of the data that we're actually using is fourth-grade data, it, it's, now, I wanna make this clear, it's one data point that we're utilizing, and the MCAS, the fourth-grade MCAS is a very small data point in the formula that's ultimately deciding where students are being placed. But it's still something we have to use, because we wanna get as many data points as possible, along with benchmark tests, along with the I-Rate assessments, the diagnostic I-Rate assessments that the students take, and a, in a placement exam that is really, uh, almost like a final exam for our kids. So with, with all this being said, we, we can't assume that we're getting it right every time for all of these kids. So, we wanna take a good, hard look to make sure that we are ensuring that as many students are offered that pacing that they really should have, and one of the thoughts is to potentially, and I wanna use that word, potentially, wait until after sixth grade, that's one of the factors that we're thinking about. If that were to be the case, that would mean that we are going to change how we teach grade six math to everybody, and it would essentially mean it's going to be a much more rigorous math for everyone who goes to grade six. Because now we wanna see who, who could continue on that path, and who, who maybe struggles a little bit, we have to slow things down for them. That's, that's, that's a year, maybe a year and a half of professional development, of changing curriculum, of aligning things, of mapping, mapping work, and I, I doubt that a change like that, and I don't wanna ever say that definitely wouldn't happen, but I doubt that a change like that would even be able to happen within the next two school years, okay? These are just things that we're discussing as a team, most significantly, and though we need to figure out how we can ensure as many kids as possible are getting as high, uh, as, 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 as much opportunity to be in the accelerated math. We are not in any way, shape, or form dismantling that, so I wanna make that perfectly clear to folks. Uh, we're in a data collection phase now, because there's, there's data out there that we have, and we have to look at more of it from different years, of how many students we recommended in fifth grade, but then tested into advanced math in sixth, after sixth grade and after seventh grade, because as you, those parents who have been in middle school that know, just because you weren't in in sixth grade, doesn't mean you can't eventually get in in seventh grade based on the work that you did in your sixth-grade year. So if there are significant numbers saying that we're, we're getting it, we're missing a lot of kids, well, maybe we should wait a year, maybe we should wait a year. And I think those are important conversations for us to have as, as a math curriculum team, but we hear loud and clear that folks would certainly not want us to get rid of accelerated math, and I can tell you that I agree with you, would not be doing that. I want as many kids as possible to have that opportunity, and, and that's what we're doing. So hopefully, we can stop with these, um, these people who are, are afraid and fearful of, of getting rid of accelerated math, and know that that is misinformation, and I'm here to debunk that for you, so that's, that's my soapbox this evening.
Thanks, Mike. I would really encourage everyone to, and whoever might be watching this, cause that was really excellent information, and I appreciate hearing it myself. It's really tricky for, for school committee members when we see your concerns on, for the first time on Facebook or Twitter, Instagram, wherever you're complaining on social media, uh, for a lot of different reasons. First of all, we cannot give you the complete answer that you're looking for, you know, this is not judgment, by the way, I understand trying to go out and see what your friends think and see if they've heard the same thing, but if you're not coming directly to the source of whatever your concern is, chances are you're, you're not really getting the full context, the right information, and assuming that because we are on those social platforms, that we can answer your question.
Or that some of us are.
Or, or that some of us even are, uh, we're prohibited from, uh, open meeting law, from really engaging in a conversation, that, especially one that would really give you all the information that you want. For instance, if I chimed in, one of my colleagues might see that, you know, I left. For instance, if I chimed in, one of my colleagues might see that, you know, I left something out and then they might feel like they would chime in. And before you know it, we're having a whole conversation. We're breaking open meeting law. So, it's not that we don't want to communicate with you, but by law, we need to communicate here. You can write us a letter. You can come to our meeting. Uh, but most importantly, when it comes to curriculum issues, you know, go directly to the source. We have a director of curriculum. Um, you could try to reach the superintendent if it's a, something that falls under his wheelhouse. And you can always reach out to any one of us and we can always direct you to the right person and that way you, we can give you whatever information you're looking for. And sometimes you might, uh, remind us that it's time to have a more public discussion about something that, uh, people might be confused about. So, it would be helpful if, if you came to us. So, I just wanted to put that out there, just so that, um, you're getting the right information and the most complete information and it doesn't put us in a situation of trying to communicate that out. Believe me, it's very frustrating when I'm like, I really want to answer this because I know what you're looking for, but it puts me in a situation, um, and as well as my colleagues. And I know some of us are, you know, I'm really grateful to people that can get on and answer. And, and at that point though, the rest of us have to step back because once somebody engages with you, it makes it more difficult for, you know, for it to be more complete conversation. So, thank you for listening, if you're watching.
Just wish more people were watching, that's all.
And that's on any topic. I mean, it's not just this one. I mean, we, we see things all the time and I, I think sometimes it does work out where you get your question answered really fast and everybody moves on. But, um, this process is meant to be a two-way communication. And we can do better jobs when you're communicating directly with us face to face. And, and I think you'll feel better about what's going on behind the scenes if you give us that opportunity to communicate directly with you. So, anybody else on that? Okay.
Got anything else, Mike?
You checked the box.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is that the Special Olympics are taking place at the high school on the fourteenth. Uh, it's, it's, it's a fantastic event. So, if you do have the opportunity to go and, and watch our athletes participate, it's very special. It's the five-time Special Olympics. I know our student group mentioned it earlier, but I always, uh, feel like I want to, I want to plug that event because it really is a, a wonderful, wonderful thing that happens here. And we get to host this year, so it's great.
And.
Many of us will be there, I think.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah, I'm going to try to get there. One of the things that one of the students mentioned too, Kate mentioned that the unified basketball team did a, a parade through the middle school, right?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the, uh, the, the middle school unified basketball team had a jamboree, their, their last game. Uh, jamboree was yesterday, so the, the student population at the middle school came out in abundance and, and cheered them on as they left and, uh.
Kate, Kate came on pretty psyched about it.
Wonderful.
They went two and one yesterday.
Yeah, right. Awesome.
They were, I know. I got to go to the game a couple of weeks ago at the middle school and it was just, it was the, the student athletes were all having so much fun. The crowd was amped up and everybody was there supporting. It was just a really very heartwarming community event and it was, it was very touching. I was happy that I got, because I didn't get to go to any of the high school ones. I wasn't able to make it. So, it was really, it was really a wonderful.
It was great.
Yeah, they're gonna have a nice, um, pizza dinner on Monday, um, with family, kids. It's great.
Nice.
Also, Unified Track is currently going on, so slightly different sport, but.
Are they practicing with the track team, with the high school track team or just kind of in, in parallel to you guys?
Uh, so far as I see, it's in parallel, though I'm a distance runner, which means that I get my instructions to go run six miles and then I leave.
By the time you get back, everybody is long gone.
Yeah, basically. Um, so I don't see a ton of what happens with sprinters and the throwers and the jumpers. Uh, but I do know that they are up on the field, uh, and using the track at the same time as the rest of the track team.
Excellent. Okay, warrant approvals?
Uh, one second. Between March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three and April sixth, twenty twenty-three, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of five hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. This includes general fund expenses of four hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Revolving expenses of one hundred twelve thousand, six hundred and four dollars and three cents and grant expenses of three thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. And meals tax in the amount of seventy-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Thank you. Approval minutes, March two. We'll start there, twenty twenty-three. Anything?
Those were the updated.
Right, those are the updated ones, yeah.
Everybody, you're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Move to accept as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Aaron, Paul, Tina?
Aye.
Mark, me. March sixteenth? Any concerns? No? Take a motion?
Move to approve March sixteen, twenty twenty-three minutes as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. Gifts and donations?
Yeah, we have a couple. Uh, Needham Bank, five hundred dollars for HS, um, Reality Fair. Ashland K-12 PTO, four thousand, three hundred dollars, eighty cents for the grade eight field trip transportation. Middle Sec Savings Bank, five hundred dollars for the HS Reality Fair. Planet Aid, two hundred forty-five dollars, twenty-eight cents, miscellaneous gifts and donations. And, uh, Ashland Parents and Students, uh, seven thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars, sixty-one cents for the Warren School Book Fair, for a total of twelve thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Wonderful. Who's got the motion?
Move to approve the gifts and donations as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Aaron?
Aye.
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Member updates? Tommy, want to start?
Uh, I kind of gave my updates at the.
I was just gonna say, you gave a great update at the beginning, so.
So, it's nice to actually have something to talk about. Um, so I went to Casino Night, so a few of you there. Um, so that was a great, uh, event and it's the first in the AFI event post-COVID, right? So, um, interesting to see how they're pivoting strategy, but I think it was still a huge success. It'll be nice to find out, you know, really the numbers at a later point, but, um, it was a really fun event. Nice to see, uh, a lot of people out and also a lot from the town side. So, not just school committee members and school parents, but, you know, Michael Herbert brought his wife and I saw Mrs. Greaves and her husband and, um, so, nice event. And then we had safety committee, uh, was it yesterday?
Monday.
Monday. Um, and you all know that Paul is doing an amazing job on Mendez, but this was going through all of the safety elements related to the new school building as far as the lighting, cameras, et cetera. And it's such a technologically advanced building. The meeting, you know, nobody said it out loud, but I could tell by what everybody was feeling, the level of anxiety of yet another school shooting and the responsibility that falls on our committee to try to think about these horrible events and mitigate where we can, put into place processes, procedures, um, and, um, Dr. Kyrie did, and actually a really good job of digging in and saying like what we need to revisit yet again because we had some amazing plans and the go-bags and all of this and COVID happened. Like what still really is there that's solid? What do we need to approve upon? What does the data tell us? You know, most school shootings are over within five minutes. Uvalde is a major exception to that. But, you know, so, uh, those meetings are very hard and you walk away with like the soreness in your chest thinking about these children, but, um, the, the work, like we went through all the blueprints and whatnot. So, it was a really good meeting.
That's old school, blueprints, huh?
What, what do you call them? Drawings?
They're plans, yeah.
Plan, yeah.
Were they blue?
No, they weren't. They were white.
Poor plan.
But, but even something as simple as, and, you know, when we all did the tour after our budget meeting, seeing that separate entrance, that's the guidance slash nurse exit to be able to dismiss students and that it's connected to where an ambulance can pull right up and take the kid out. And it's just the things that have been thought of and also a lot of what Paul has thought of in addition and been able to add to the plan as far as mitigating safety, uh, measures is just awesome. Okay, good. Great to hear. Thank you. Want to be at the end?
I was, I was gonna, yeah, I'll probably be at the end. I'll have some photos to share.
Okay.
That are old now, but, because I took them almost a week ago, but.
I feel like everybody's mentioned everything I would have mentioned anyway, so I'll just consider that box checked.
Ditto.
Ditto. Casino Night was wonderful. I just do want to thank the, everybody who put that together. It was a great time. Well done and, uh, such a benefit for all of us and great to see everyone there. I had a tour of the Mendez School with Paul, um, just a few days ago, so I was shocked just not seeing it in a few weeks. It's a whole different school already. It's so exciting and it really looks like a real school and so, right? I mean, it's, yeah.
Every, every day I go.
Every day. There's like something, but when, when you miss, it's like a kid that you haven't seen in a while and they like grow by leaps and bounds.
It sounds like from the, the Mendes, this one better start growing.
Yeah, right. So, that was great, um.
We have, we have flexible spaces.
Yeah, I know.
We definitely have flexible space.
We were, uh, very, very concerned about that, I think, when we, you know, started that project, which is good.
Um, I did help out with the Make-A-Wish fashion show, which was really amazing. Like there, the kids were amazing. We had two Wish kids that came at the end and modeled and that was very moving. There were a lot of people in the audience and it's a great fundraiser for the Make-A-Wish Club. I did go to the Holy Day and had some really excellent food and it was fun to see all the colors. I went, the A-D.
Yeah, I forgot to mention.
Yeah, the A-D, uh, group has started. There's some excellent candidates that I think, um, everyone can feel good about, right?
Yeah, we had fifty-three applicants.
Yeah, and, and the ones that are coming forward to interview are, are high quality. Um, and I think there are about at least four more. Four more, Jim, that, that we're going to be interviewing?
That is correct.
Three the other day and, and four, four more. Went to the Lions Breakfast this morning and, and talked with some of the folks from that group and that was great. And that's it.
Izzy would have been there.
I know.
That, that's the first place I met, I met Izzy.
Same. Paul?
All right, so, yeah, I, I kind of went to many of the things that everybody talked about. Thank you to the AFI for that, uh, both from a school perspective, but also a community perspective. All the changes they made were, I think, very well received. The, the vibe was so great. Thank you to nearly all of our administrators made it to that, that night. I, I saw almost all of them. The ones that, uh, weren't there, I'm sure, just had other obligations, but.
Or were sick.
Or had pneumonia.
Or had pneumonia.
Yeah, well, that too. I wasn't even thinking about you, actually. But, uh, but no, that was, that was just an awesome night from a community perspective. I mean, uh, it was, it was just a really, really great vibe, much. The, because we didn't have the tables and it was more casual, it seemed to be a lot more social than the previous ones that kind of, oh, you had your table and you had your little home bases and I thought that it was much, much smaller, obviously, uh, from a capacity perspective, but, uh, I, I thought everything they did was great and so I really appreciate that. And with that, I will kind of maybe go over some of this stuff. So, this was, uh, March thirty-first, I believe, so again, these are old pictures of them.
Half a week, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there's a, there's a mound of dirt in front and so this is a, a shot from that mound of dirt. On the left-hand side, I'll go back over here. Why is that not? Uh, you'll see, I took this picture because that's the, the metal trim that's going along on the, on the coping on top there, uh, along the gymnasium. That's, uh, further along now, obviously. That was a while ago. This is, looks different than it, uh, they, 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 so, yeah, the, the ceiling's actually painted a white on this, uh, on this side now. So, they, they, they all, they, they bagged all the, uh, hoops and different things and, uh, painted this half of the ceiling. Yet, we have not, we have not shot hoop yet, so. That's what everybody says, although I did find a basketball in, in, in the data. In the data closet over in the admin, I found a basketball. I'm like, what's that doing there? So, somebody had a basketball. Nobody's fussing up.
The walls are painted now.
Yeah, the walls are painted and the ceiling's painted. Well, half the ceiling's painted.
Is the ceiling gonna, is it open and it's just like the beams are painted? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so it basically looks like that, but, uh, all, all the metal and, and the ceiling is painted white. Everything is painted white. You'll see that the divider's there, but also, uh, I don't think it's in this picture. Uh, the, there's a telescoping projector.
Yeah, you can actually just see the corner of it fall.
Yeah, I was trying to see if that, if, if, if that is it, yeah.
Screen is, just the top.
And, and then there's a, a projector screen on the other end of the, end of there. Uh, this is just showing some of the, this is the EDP office and all the cabinets they're going in. The masonry, uh, the brick masonry in the interior courtyard's done.
It's really pretty detail.
Which, which one?
Here, the, of this.
Yeah, but, yeah, the different brick, yeah.
Yeah, it's really pretty.
The hallways are painted on these. Yeah, and everyone's like a different color.
How fun.
Yeah.
It's third grade.
It's like the yellow hallway.
Right, exactly. There's yellow, there's blue, there's like an orange.
Yeah, so.
It's great.
Uh, and even this is old because.
Looks different now, too.
This hallway isn't that different, but the other ones, we'll, I'll show are, are different. Here are some classrooms. So, this is looking from the windows towards, um, so all the whiteboards on the second floor and.
Oh, wow.
So, you'll see, uh, most of them with a few exceptions based on where they are and structurally the layout of, of the rooms, but, uh, you'll see on the left-hand side there, there's two six-foot whiteboards. Uh, in the middle, there'll be a sixty-five inch display, interactive display there and then an eight-foot whiteboard in the back wall there where the teacher's desk would be.
I forgot, Paul, but every room, every classroom gets fitted with.
This is, this is, this is standard, no, no projectors, just the, the display.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so no short throw projectors, got the whiteboard and the interactive display.
Yeah.
So, it's sixty-five inch display.
Wow.
Same room, just from where we're standing at the cubbies, so you get an idea of the, the windows and, and a different, uh, space there.
What a pretty color.
Yeah, this is, this tile's all done now and, um, and more of this is painted.
This tile on the bottom.
Yeah, so there's tiles, wain, wainscoting throughout the hallways and, and things like that.
Throughout, and where you see that bucket, I mean, throughout all the pods, we have storage areas.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, it's a storage closet right there.
Whatever you want to call it. Curriculum closet, it could be. It might be EDP if you're watching Melissa work on Smith through like I did last week. Every space is a EDP storage. She was great. She said, oh, yeah, that was EDP. That's what we designed.
Yeah, we, we, we gave, we gave her a tour and it's like, yep, EDP storage.
Yeah.
Because, because what we do typically do is, is as we do loops and we, and we see the same place again, we will ask our people returning, what's this? It was easy for her. EDP storage. It didn't matter what, it could be somebody's office. It's EDP storage.
Have they found that tile wainscoting is, it really helps with like the wear and tear on the walls?
Yeah, it's protect the walls, yeah. So, like I took this picture because that was the only place it's green, but now this is, this is a bath, this is, this is a bathroom. And know that, th- those are the spacers and stuff on the tile on the floor.
The red ones are. I know the white ones were, but the red ones are spacers as well?
This is on the, uh, outdoor classroom on, uh, over the admin, looking back at the media center. So, all the, all those windows are in. This is in the media center, looking out at those windows, so that wooden door on the right-hand side is the same wooden door you see, uh, right there in the center of the screen. This was after that, so this was, um, I don't know when we, when we took this walk. But the sinks are getting dropped and they're not, they're not plumbed right now, but, uh, so this is a shot of a, one of the places where. And this was from today. So, these are the nano walls, the folding glass partitions. So, this is one that's, um, in between the media center and the, and the STEM room.
Oh, okay.
So cool.
That's awesome.
Love it.
Now, I'll say this. I've literally sent an email before the meeting. They are tomorrow, uh, turning it around, uh, but.
So, they go, so they.
Right, right now the operable handles are on the STEM side as opposed to, as.
Ah, okay.
Geez, isn't that the same problem with the fire department?
No. Not even close. This is handling, getting handled tomorrow, so inside of twenty-four hours, it's getting handled, not twenty-four months.
We could actually open the building that way.
And when the flame goes in, this is no longer, this is like a zero.
No, no, it's, it's, it's a standard, um.
Door frame?
Yeah, it's like. Yeah, it's, it's like a standard threshold door frame. Yeah, so that needed to go in because on the other side here in the STEM space is going to be an epoxy floor, so they need this in before they pour that epoxy floor.
Gotcha.
Uh, those are all the, uh, all the updates I, I have to share, but...
They've been busy, Paul.
Looks awesome. It's awesome.
There, uh, will I be there? Probably not.
It just seems like such a cool process, like when you see them like doing the flakes for the epoxy floors.
Yeah, the, the gym flooring is arriving, I think it's supposed to be arriving this week or next, and, um, and then that acclimatizes for about two weeks, and then that'll, that'll be start going in as well. So flooring is the next big, big thing. The, some of the bathrooms are all tiled, um, most of the windows are in, they've started doing window testing, uh, yeah, it, it changes every, like, literally, we, we took a tour, a, a group through, we went into what is now the fourth grade pod, which didn't have any paint on it, and people were, were taught, we were, were taking a tour, started talking about green, and I'm like, yeah, well, this, you, you can't see it because it'd be green, and I'm like, oh, wait, no, they, they, they started painting, that's where they got it from, it was, it was literally in between those, they started painting, uh, that pod. Uh, there was another one, we went into an E, uh, an L room, and we're like, okay, that whiteboard wasn't, wasn't there thirty minutes ago. So, uh, so, yeah, things are changing quite rapidly.
It looks great.
Yeah, again, like, thanks to the building committee and to all of you who are on, and you, of course, Paul, thanks. It's really special.
Yeah, it's great to, great to see it coming from, you know, started, what, seventy years ago, and...
Two thousand sixteen was the original.
Seventeen was a statement of interest.
Right, because two thousand sixteen is when I had the, in the initial, um, analysis of all the buildings.
I know, but when, and back then, I, I do remember the feeling of when you're talking to something that, like, not even going to materialize for like five to seven years, it just seemed like...
It seems so far away.
Right.
Remember when we were going to search buildings?
Oh, yeah. It's all, it was all part of that whole process.
Yeah, and, and it's weird because it's for, being in that so long, it's still, I can still, don't see that it's going to open in, in July, in July.
But it is.
And, and, no, it's July seventeenth, and it can't move, so...
Right, so it is.
And quite frankly, the minute, uh, that school's out, that the old building has to start going, coming down from the ends, because we have one hell of a summer to get, uh, everything done, done for, ready for, uh, the site work to, to get it open in, in the fall, so...
The other building, like, the current Mendez, that kids are currently taking classes at, what happens to it?
Coming down soon.
It's going down, to be replaced by playgrounds, uh, basketball court fields.
Time to go.
Past time to go.
Yeah.
A question with that, though, like, I would like to grab my locker, uh, like the number off my locker before the building gets destroyed, if that's okay.
As long as you don't get in anybody's way.
Okay. I'll be the one running out.
Get out before the wrecking ball.
That's it, that's your one chance, June twentieth.
Okay.
When the bell rings and the school, and the kids are gone, you have, you have a couple hours, and then that's it.
All right, it looks like if, if anyone...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Thank you, everybody, have a wonderful night. Thanks.